We'll go ahead and get started, and the first item on the agenda is discussion of Charter Review Commission. So with that being said, I have a number of thoughts, but wanted to see if anybody wanted to start the discussion or move forward in that regard. I'm open to my colleagues' comments.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Proceed.
Are we allowing any public input tonight? Or is this going to be just confined to?
Yeah, the plan was, from my perspective, that we would discuss this, then allow it to be public input at the next meeting where we discuss this formally. Is that okay with you, or what's your thoughts?
No, I don't have a problem. I just want the public to have, as we've discussed, public to have some input into it. I think we talked about that, we agreed upon that, so.
Sure.
Slow and easy wins the race, I guess, at this point.
There we go, all right. Anybody else have other thoughts?
Just a question.
Sure.
I think we'd ask the city manager for information relative to best practices from other cities. Can we maybe get a review of that, what that might have, what that found?
Mr. Walker?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Yes, we did take a look at other municipalities, both regionally as well as across the country. Unfortunately, that was really inconclusive. There are really no best practices in terms of size or in terms of composition, both number of members or how those members are selected. It seemed to just be very specific to each community and what met that community's needs. In particular, the common thread being that each of these communities wanted to have as much engagement as possible along the way. So they made certain that the community was aware of what they were doing, but there was really no rhyme or reason or methodology. We also looked at a couple of national organizations, like the National League of Cities and the National Civic League, who produces the Model City Charter. Again, their information was more content-specific about best practices as far as local government administration, form of government, et cetera, but not specific to the formation of a charter commission itself.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
Mr. City Manager, so I'm in agreement that maybe the charter maybe could use some small tweaks or some minor changes, but I'm not really sure if that outweighs the monetary investment we're going to be making in this. If we go through an appointment process of the nomination, and we do the appointments, and then the charter committee spends a year on it, and then, I think you said in February of 2024, possibly we put it on the ballot. What kind of cost are we talking about, you know, doing all of that and then eventually putting it on the ballot?
Yeah, so a couple of things. Any election that you have, generally, the estimated cost is somewhere between $125,000 to $150,000 per election. Now, that fluctuates somewhat based on which election cycle you are in. So obviously, a presidential election is going to be much more expensive than an election where maybe the only issue on the ballot is a city council primary race, for example. However, we are not charged by the number of items on the ballot. It is a flat fee regardless of the number of issues we have on there. So whether the council are ultimately to put one issue before the voters regarding the charter or as many, you know, I'm saying hypothetically, 21 different amendments, you're facing the same fiscal impact there. The last thing I'd add to that, Councilmember Stewart, there is nothing magical about February the 24th, or 2024, I should say. That was a product of where I saw the next election that would be a year from now, where you conceivably may also have a primary where you could share some cost burden there. But I would advise the council, it would be my recommendation, that the more important issue be that that charter commission, in practice and in theory, have as ample time as needed to thoroughly review and vet these proposals, make those recommendations to the council, and then explain to the council and the community the rationale behind those recommendations. I would not do this just for the sake of meeting a deadline.
Okay, so it looks like there's eight areas of focus, maybe. Does that sound right?
Sounds, yes, sir.
Focus on it, okay. So in your opinion, I mean.
Yes.
There's a lot to these. Is the person in charge of our, basically, our city finances and entrusted to handle those.
Yeah.
Is this really, is there any one thing on there that you would, that's worth the $180,000?
I think in totality, based on the amount of time that has elapsed since we last had a review. So juxtapose us against some of our peer cities right here in Jackson County who have mandatory reviews, who are required somewhere between every five to 10 years to form a citizens' commission and review. Even if no proposals are brought forward, they still conduct that review. We're pretty far behind on that. There are some of those things on that list that case law in the United States has changed and rendered portions of the charter moot. So we've got conflicting language in there. And then just, you know, over the years, various questions that have been raised to me or predecessors, where very wise minds have had differing opinions on language interpretations, the opportunity to perhaps provide more clarity about intent or purpose. I believe in totality, Councilmember, it would be my recommendation that we that we at least engage in exploration of that.
Okay, so let's say we get it all done, we go, we decide to go ahead and do it. I'm going to get into the resolution itself and.
Yeah.
Some of the points. So if this does happen, I want to make sure, I mean, we're all supposed to be equals up here, you know? I want to make sure that my representation counts as much as anybody else. So maybe I'm not understanding it clearly, but is it possible that I would appoint three members and none of those people get on here the way it's currently written?
No, the idea was, particularly after that first, if the council recall back in April, that first iteration was on, that was an overwhelming concern that I heard from the body was ensuring that each council district was guaranteed equal representation. So the idea here would be, given that the council is a collegial body, it would ultimately be the body that would make that appointment. However, it would be the individual council members who provided the nominations for each of their districts, so that the body is then able to take a group of nominations and identify a representative from each district.
Well, I'm not asking about a representative from each district. What I'm asking is, and maybe I'm not clear on this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because there's a lot to it. Is it possible that if I make three nominations, that one, that it's possible that none of them would get on there? I mean, it looks to me that maybe somebody might, like if Mayor or.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, yeah.
In the way that we have envisioned it, it would be, each council member would nominate three people. We would, as a body, would rank choice those three people, and one of those people from that selection would be selected. We would not take all of the ranked choice, pool them together, and take the top choices.
Okay.
So one of your three choices, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, would in fact be, be, you know, on.
It just doesn't sound to me like that's the way the resolution's currently written.
You probably need to, exactly, that's why I have.
Yeah, we need to wordsmith, but my recommendation to the body was that, given our current situation with six members of the body, that each of you would put forward, excluding the mayor for a moment, so the people who are either district or the at-large council member, each of you would identify three individuals.
Okay.
And from each council member, two of those three would be appointed to the board, and then the current resolution envisioned the mayor appointing one individual to serve as the chairperson. Now, again, that's why we came here tonight, was for all of those, you know, potential amendments, but just to add clarity, that was the intent of the resolution.
Well, this is just what I would like to see personally, and I'm hoping this makes sense after I say it, that each council member, I'm going to exclude the mayor, so five of us, would appoint three, or nominate three people.
Right.
And those, we would do a ranked choice voting on those three people to put one on there, so making sure that every council member had one nominee, one person that they nominated on there. The mayor, I guess we'd appoint the chair, like it says in the current resolution, and you would get two nominations. We'd take those final nominations, and we would fill out the remaining. Would it be two seats? Is that right? I think that sounds right. Three seats. Three seats.
Yeah, I'm going to think out loud for a moment if I can.
While you're thinking out loud?
Yeah, go right ahead.
My comment is, I'm looking at section two of the document, the resolution, and it, the way that reads, unless I'm, and I may be reading it wrong, but it doesn't look like I have any nominations at all, because it talks about that each district would have a, would have three nominations, but maybe I'm not reading that correct. So I'm just pointing that out. I don't think that was the intent, I just.
I noticed that as well.
Go ahead, proceed.
I was just going to say, I noticed that as well.
Right, and, you know, my discussion, or my ideas were tonight that we would discuss this and have a basic directive to the city manager to direct the resolution as follows. If I can proceed and then just give everybody the thoughts that I have, and then see if anyone has an opinion. Every council member would nominate three. We would rank choice those three people, okay, in a pool by themselves. I, as the mayor, would select the chair of the committee. Then when it came down to, people had concerns about me picking three people, and so they said, can you pick two? I'd be happy to do that, but it really comes down to when you rank choice those two people, it's going to be a ranked choice between those two individuals, it'll be either one or the other. If we do it that way, considering that we do it the way that you're bringing it up, that each council member gets, because we can put them all in the pool and rank choice them, but if you do that, you may be at risk of not having any of your members selected. You see what I'm saying? And, you know, are you willing to take that risk?
I just want to make sure that somebody I nominate gets on there. As long as we can fix that in the resolution.
Right.
Then I'd be happy with this.
And so.
Excluding the monetary portion.
Yeah, so I wanted to clarify, I'm reading that section two, and I see the concern with the language that says nominating three individuals from their council district. I, we can work on some clarifying language, but my intent was because Councilmember Fears you represent a district at large, that that would give you the flexibility to pick, you know, individuals from a citywide perspective. Whereas, some of the comments I'd heard a few weeks ago was each member of the body wanted to ensure that, to Councilmember Stewart's point, that there was equal representation from each member, and that these districts had equal voice in the process.
Yeah, when I read the district, you know, district capitalized, I'm assuming we got four districts, and so that's the way I read that.
Yeah, we could certainly bring the council some language for clarification to make sure Councilmember Stewart's point that he's driving toward is the one that's fully understood by the council.
And I understand that Councilmember Fears or Mayor Roland can appoint somebody from my district. I guess my thought process is, who they would appoint may not be who I appoint.
Right.
Or nominate, so.
No, there would still.
I would just like one of my nominations to make sure they get on this committee.
Yeah, and that is important. And the way this was written was to still empower, that you identified three finalists, and then your colleagues, through that ranked choice process, two would emerge to represent the second district.
Okay, thank you, and that's all I have.
So then, City Man, Mr. City Manager, if I can say, each council member, including the mayor, will, excuse me, each council member will nominate three people. The mayor will nominate or appoint the chairperson of the committee, and then I would have two people that I would rank, so that, you know, I'm not promoting three, just two on that side, so I've got three nominations to make that equal, is the concern that some people had. And I think that takes care of most of the concerns that I've heard from folks, unless anyone else has any suggestions on it.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So if we, if everybody nominates three except for you, and you nominate two.
Right.
And, and, well, take out the appointing.
Okay.
For a second. So the way I was thinking that I was understanding, we were going to nominate, each person was going to nominate three, but you would nominate two, since you're appointing.
Right.
The chairman.
Right.
So, chairperson. So that's then, out of those, that group, then we would rank choice three. So that gets us six members, correct?
Right, because each one individually, there'd be a ranked choice of all of us here. Five people would rank choice that person, five people ranked choice that person.
Right.
Five, and so we would do all the ranked choicing.
So that gets us six positions.
Right.
You're appointing the chairperson, so that gives us seven positions.
Right.
So now we have two positions.
Right.
And so, from my understanding, that on those other two positions, we would, we would just vote on who we wanted, and it would be the top two vote-getters essentially, out of, that would fill the nine. Is that correct?
How I'm envisioning it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, once you do that, and you take that pool, and then who are the next up from that? You see what I'm saying? So you would have these, this whole pool of everyone's nominations here, and we would pick the eighth and the ninth selection would be the two people who got the highest vote of that ranking. Does that make sense?
No, I'm not following you.
Okay, so let's say, I'm just going to rank the council members by numbers here, and I'm sorry that folks can't see this, because I'm writing on it, but you've got one through six. Each person gets one choice, right? So that's good, six, we get one nomination, so you've got two more. But out of this pool, let's say, these two council members' second choices got the most votes. So you could potentially get a situation where, you know, one council member actually had two people that were nominated, just so we can fill out the nine.
Mr. Fears, the remaining two slots would come from a combined pool of all of our nominations that didn't get selected.
Right, well, I guess my thought process was that it seems to me that once we identify who those top six are.
Yeah.
Then it makes sense then to go back in and rank our, rank who's remaining.
Correct, we will, we'll put them in a big ball, big, one big list.
And then we choose the top, we get the top two of those.
Right.
That group, whoever they happen to be.
Is that what you were thinking, Mr. Walker? That's what I thought.
But that's not what, that's not the way I understood what.
Yeah, and.
Mayor just said.
Right, and is that right then, or no?
No, I'm with your logic, where you re, where you put them all back in a pool again and revote.
Yep, yep, yep. Does that make sense, Mr. Walker?
Okay, are you good with that?
That way, every district's represented, the city at large's represented, that we have a chairperson, and then we have two, kind of, almost, not really ad hoc, but they're.
Almost like superdelegates or whatever, because they'll be selected from that pool.
That group.
And put them back in, so they'll be basically two functions of voting.
Right, right.
Okay. Is that clear as mud?
I was going to say, if that's too complicated, we could just leave the charter intact and just follow this one.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
We are not open for nominations or seconds, so thank you, gentlemen, for the effort there. Appreciate it.
We do what we can. I do have another question in terms of cost. Mr. City Manager, I understand $125,000 to $150,000 is to bring it to a ballot. I'm interested in what's the total cost to go through this entire review, and how do we budget that? I mean, guess what we're going to have overseeing all of this? We're going to be hiring attorneys. We've got to keep them, keep them busy, so they've got to make sure that whatever we're bringing to the council lines up with the state constitution, the Bill of Rights, US Constitution, Bill of Rights. It's going to have to have some legal oversight. So do we have any idea what our costs are going to be in terms of our legal oversight for it? Because you're going to have time, you're going to bring their talents together, they're going to spend a lot of time, and there'll be finance included in this. And I would like to know what, and I know you can't give me an exact, but we're talking an expansive time where we're going to have to have legalized on it to make sure that whatever we bring forth lines up.
That is going to be driven by the requests of the commissioners themselves, what a level of research and support they need. You know, we obviously have some employees on staff who are attorneys and can provide some level of support. The committee may request additional research services or legal services, as you're referencing, and it would be difficult for me to ballpark that, but it's certainly going to be driven by the inquiries and needs of that commission.
Would you, would you find that to be maybe something important that we know about before we weigh in and vote? I mean, I would like to know what the costs are going to be. Got to have due process, you've got to have, I mean, we, and, I mean, do we set a budget for that committee? And, I mean, because, let's face it, if it goes to February of '24, you're going to be in another budget here. How do we pay for this?
The council could set aside funds, that could be an outcome. It could be a pay-as-you-go. That is more driven by the six of you of how you want to handle that.
We have no problem spending your money.
I've noticed.
I'd rather you be involved in it and help us understand what would be reasonable, practical, responsible.
I could check with a couple of the peer cities right here in the metro who have recently done this, and provide the council a figure of what those cities expended and for what type of services yet this week.
That would be helpful.
I'd be happy to do that, that's a point well taken.
All right. Because, my good Mr. City Manager, there's other cities who have gone through this process in the recent past, Blue Springs being one of them. I recognize their size is less than ours, but they'd be a good representation of. You could do proportional average and figure out roughly what their expenditures were compared to their size, compared to our size, and what do we think would happen?
Yeah, I know everywhere from Kansas City, Missouri, down to Blue Springs has engaged in some kind of process, so I think we could give you a representative sample or even a per capita amount, like you said, proportional, so that you could see. And I think it would be helpful for the council, too, to know what those kind of services represented. You know, I know Kansas City has a very large legal department, so perhaps they didn't use as much outside legal help, but maybe they used an extensive research service. I don't know, but I think this is information that would be helpful to the council as you consider the final decisions.
And just one other question, would this be a good task for the management analyst to work on?
Yes, that would be excellent.
Would I be out of line directing that question to their? Maybe I should ask the chairman of the Finance and Audit Committee?
If that was the consensus of the council.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm fine, no, I'm fine, I'll put it on the memo. I got to give him a memo with some detailed work that we talked about the last committee, so.
That's okay.
To do the research on what other cities have, what this process has cost and.
Right.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You all right with that, Mr. Green? Thanks, sir.
See, customer service. There you go. All right, any other discussions on it?
Or the whole?
Just the cost part.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
When this ultimately ends up on an agenda, I know you mentioned residents could come in and talk about it.
Sure.
Or whatever.
Right.
Are we going to do like a public hearing on this, or is just going to plan on doing it for comments before? Because if we can do a public hearing on it, that would be awesome.
Well.
And advertise it.
You know. What are people's thoughts on that? I mean, I was just thinking of having the, on the day that we bring it up, having comments like we typically do at city council meeting, rather than doing a separate public hearing.
I would just kind of prefer the public hearing, and we just advertise it in advance, people know, so that there's no questions.
Yeah.
From anybody.
But I think when we advertise on the agenda, that fits that responsibility. That's my, that's my thought on it, but I'm open to comments from my colleagues in that regard, but that's how I'd like us to do it.
I would welcome public input. I think having a public, open, public session, let them weigh in on it as well, would be, I think it'd be helpful, and I think it would be, there may be things they bring forward that we haven't thought of, so I think it might be beneficial to us.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, proceed.
I'm not particularly for or against the public hearing on it, but I don't know what would they possibly say, they're either going to be for it or against it. I don't know. I just don't know how valuable that is. I don't know. That's all.
Thank you.
I guess my opinion is that I certainly would like to see us get as much public input as we can, and if a hearing's the best way to do that, fine. If we just have them, you know, come to a council meeting, I mean, there are always, people are always available to talk to us at the beginning of council meetings. So, you know, I don't know that I have a strong opinion one way or another, just would like to hear, if there is opinions, and I'd like to hear it.
Okay, anyone else have other thoughts?
Just to weigh in on my colleague, if we have specific outcomes that we're working towards, because I don't know, I don't know what specifics we're going into here. Are we just going to rewrite the entire charter, or are there just specific sections? Yeah, I don't know, I mean, this is the question. Are we going to, are we just looking at sections? And then what is the specific incomes or outcomes we'd like to see? And then let them weigh in on those topics? And right now, I don't know what those topics are.
Well.
Mayor, may I?
Proceed.
Yeah. Councilmember, I think you saw my eyeballs when you asked that question. I have given, I've had the opportunity to present to the council on a number of occasions about potential charter review committees and how they could function. The commission could be given free rein to look at all aspects of the charter, cover to cover. I think that is when you potentially run the risk of having a commission that is out for a very long time, because there is a large component to the charter, and certainly a lot of things that could be discussed and debated. I tried to bring you things that either in old memos from predecessors or prior councils discussing this were brought up, or things that I've seen this or previous councils grapple with. That certainly wouldn't limit the commission from coming back and expressing to the council desires to get into other parts of the charter, but I would recommend that the council try to provide some sort of guidance, because otherwise, I think you're asking a very monumental task of these citizen volunteers to try to comb through each and every section of our charter. each and every section of, of our charter.
I fully agree, but I would just like to know what those specifics are. And that's, and, and I think it should be something that is brought forward. But what are the, you know, within the specifics, what are the outcomes that we're looking for? I think that's, that's the key component here.
Hold, I've got too many windows open, just a second. So, in the resolution that we prepared for you last week, we had an idea put forward of, you know, let's see. I believe eight different items that potentially could be looked at. I, I would encourage the council between, I mean, preferably tonight, but between now and next Monday, if, if there are things you want added or deleted from that list, I, so, so there were five of those. No, I'm sorry, sir. I'm, there were, there were eight items. There were eight items that were asked to, to look at. I could read those to you now if you'd like, or?
Who asked?
Okay, so in the, in the resolution that was on your agenda last Tuesday, and that we continue to discuss this evening, section nine of that proposed resolution stated that the commission shall consider the following areas, and listed out eight different items. The intent of that being, again, to provide some guidance from the council to this commission of the areas that the council wanted to get feedback. Now, again, I, I would see no reason why that would limit the commission from potentially coming back to the council and saying, we're really concerned about this, and it wasn't on our list, can we get the council's consensus to explore this as well? But I think if there's things on this list that the council doesn't want the commission to get into at this point in time, or things that are missing, those, that should be dealt with as the initial communication tool to the, the commission.
Proceed.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we just change the, the heading of section nine to say the commission shall be considered but not be limited to the following areas?
Could absolutely do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Proceed.
Thank you. I have no preference, just so everybody knows, on what topics they look at, or no preference on what the outcome is. I know I'd like to see the outdated slash illegal slash null and void provisions updated. That would be my primary concern. Other than that, I'm sure there's, you know, it's not 1955 anymore. I, I'd like to at least start the wheels turning on a charter that works for us for the next, you know, 50 years, whatever that looks like. So. And I'm perfectly fine if we have, if and when and whenever we have a public hearing on it, or whatever hearing we have on it, or if we set up a way for the public to submit topics or questions or have discuss, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with having public input on parts they think should change, certainly, and being heard on that. So, you know, I, I think we just need to modernize a bit. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. If I can comment on this, I agree that we've got so many outdated and illegal aspects of it that need to be addressed. So there's no question it needs to be looked at. I don't think we should limit these folks from looking at the entire document as it stands. The other side of the coin is, too, Mr. City Manager, when this committee meets, they're gonna meet in the basement with no one watching them in absolute anonymity, and they will just, to permit as a document later on for us to look at. Is that right?
I would advise.
I'm being facetious.
I would advise against that.
What I'm saying is, there will be public hearings on this process the entire time. Am I, am I right on that? Because every meeting that they have is gonna be in public, and so as every topic comes up, everyone who has an interest in this topic is gonna be able to have, to be able to share their opinion. And as they share their opinion, they'll have more clarity and more looking at this process. In a democratic society, and I'm proud to be part of that, I think it's incredibly important that we have a democratic process all the way through for everyone. And this charter is not our charter, it's not, it's not the city council's charter, it's all of our charters. How do we function as a city? And what we need to do is function as a city is have a clear process all the way through. I don't think we should limit them to, I think they should be able to look at the entire document, to tell you the truth. As a matter of fact, if they would shorten it and make it more precise, I'd be happy with that. There are parts of it that are just, you know, cumbersome, and I don't know really what they're trying to say. And there's parts of it that are just not adequate to deal with some of the issues that we've actually had to deal with as a council or, or previous councils. So I would like to see that the committee have complete and absolute license to look at every item, all the sections. I would also like them to have the opportunity to make recommendations for that, and they could certainly come back and ask for clarity, and we'd be happy to give them that clarity. But I think it's pretty easy to do this, to say they have the ability to look at the entire charter, because we haven't looked at it for years, and there are illegal and outdated functions of it, and we need to, we need to be a body that says we're going to move the City of Independence forward and not be indebted to a document that was created many, many, many decades ago. And if we're gonna be going forward and moving forward, we need to do that, and that's my thoughts in the process, but I'm open discussion from my colleagues. With no further discussion.
Oh, uh, one more thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We absolutely should and could make it a part of the deal that they, that their meetings are streamed and/or recorded, so that they can meet here or, if it's possible, at the utility center.
And the other side of the coin is, too, without anybody's objection, I think I would be able, willing to give them clearance to do this on Zoom, because when you're on Zoom, it's recorded, everybody can be anywhere, it saves them.
Teams.
Yeah, whatever tool it is, thank you very much, but whatever tool it is. Because we, you know, they're going to dedicate a tremendous amount of their time to this process. They'll probably work more hours than we will, to be honest with you, as city council members, than during that timeframe they work on that project. And so I would like to make it as easy as possible. If no objections on that, we can certainly make that part of the resolution, too, if you could, Mr. City Manager.
Would it, would it be appropriate if I reviewed these notes to make sure we capture what the council's intent is prior to next Tuesday?
Yeah, and then, if we could, just put it out in a memo, obviously, from the, the city clerks, so we make sure that we follow sunshine laws. But to put it out, everybody have their, their, I don't know, would that violate sunshine law if we put it out to everyone and then ask them, are there any corrections on this document?
As long as the document's not being updated by everyone, it's going to just Zack, and you're not responding to each other, you should be fine.
Okay, so that clarity is important, so thank you. I didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. City Manager, sorry.
You're quite all right. If I've heard the council correctly this evening, we would amend the current resolution to hold that the five council members would nominate three individuals each, engage in the ranked choice voting, with each member ending up with one representative on the charter commission, the mayor getting the, the responsibility of appointing the chairperson, and two other finalists who are selected from the remaining pool of candidates. We talked about providing the council, not a resolution, but additional research information about the various expenses across the metro from cities who have recently reviewed their city charter, and I believe the management analyst was gonna be able to, to do that. Amending this section nine to state to the effect of the commission shall review but not be limited to the following items. I, I was reviewing the resolution as you were speaking. I believe we should also strike section 12, which stated that there shall be no other assignments added to the charter advisory board to consider unless done so by amendment to this or subsequent ordinances. By striking that, that would leave the commission with the latitude to, to lead where their conversation went to. I believe I heard the council at request that we place an item on next week's agenda as well to denote and allow for public comment and public input on this. If, if the council would also welcome it, staff found it very effective when we posted a online survey during the budget process, so we could have that in addition, too, in case there are people whose schedules don't allow them to make it to the council meeting on a Tuesday night at 6 o'clock, and provide that to you in advance as well, so you can see that feedback.
I love that idea.
So for clarification, something like Survey Monkey or something like that to send out to folks and say, give us your feedback on what you'd like to see with regards to the charter?
Right, it, it, you know, I'm, I'm workshopping on the fly here, but, you know, question.
We all are.
Do, do you want to see a charter review commission, yes or no? If yes, question two is, you know, rank these items, or, or check all that apply, something to that effect, so you can just get a sense of some general community feedback.
Okay. Any other discussion points? Proceed.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
For the record, I, listen, I have no issue with revisiting illegal or, or sections of our charter that need to be updated or put us into some type of issue with, with the law. I'm all for that. I just want us to have a very cautious approach when we start doing this. This can be a Pandora's box. We start opening everything up, who, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna hear all kinds of things. I just, I don't know. With all the things that we're facing as a city, I just don't know where this falls in the priority list. And so I'm not opposed, I, I mean, I'm one person, I'm one vote, but I'm, I, I don't know how well we follow this. So I don't know what a new one's gonna look like. So I just wanna say that, for the record, I will, I'm, I'm open to see sections that need to be updated due to law or, or issues of, of violations of, of the whatever, the, the Constitution Bill of Rights, whatever. But I, I think we all have to have a level of commitment to get our house in order with this. Wherever we're out of order, that is, that is within the law. And, and just, I just wanted to be very cautious when we start opening this up.
Yeah.
I just see it as being, the potential is there for it to be a real Pandora's box.
I, 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 I think that's an astute point, Councilmember. One thing I would add, and, and it's not intended to sway all of your fears, but one is that a very real outcome, if the council does appoint a charter review commission, is that the commission comes back and says, we like this thing just fine, no, no changes recommended. If that's not the case, if there's a proposal made to make a change, there, there's really a three-step safeguard, I guess, to getting to any kind of change. One is that commission making that recommendation. The second is the council voting to put that to the voters to consider, and the third would be the voters voting in the affirmative to make that, that change. So I, I, I trust that there's enough safeguards that we won't just slip something through overnight or in a, a meeting with low attendance.
And that's, and, and because it'll go to the voters is the reason that I will agree to move forward with this. If it wasn't, then I would be saying absolutely not, so.
So if I can clarify that, Mr. City Councilman, if I made a motion for this body just to vote on it, you would probably vote no.
Very astute.
I just wanted to clarify that, wanted to clarify that. Very good. Any other discussion before we move on to the second item on the agenda? All right. Second item to get on it is ethics of Ethics Review Committee. We talked a little about this last Tuesday when we had the council retreat. And I've got obviously a number of thoughts on it, but I'd be certainly open to my colleagues first to add any discussion points that they would like to see on this. It's kind of an ad hoc committee, it will have a sunshine, in my mind, of six months. We do not have a resolution written on this, so that's why I'm kind of just spitting balling it. I think as a, as a council, we should probably put sunsets on a lot of our committees that we have, because they do over time become clouded or in a different direction. So anybody have any thoughts on this before I bloviate about all the things I would like to see? All right, thank you, my friend. The first thing would be term limits for the mayor, two, two four-year terms. Contribution limits for a thousand dollars. We don't need big money in independence anymore. Contributions, no contributions from vendors who receive, and I'm trying to figure this out, and we're happy to open discussion, but I see a lot of vendors who are giving contribution limits to city council members when they run for office. I think it's a conflict of interest. That's like taking taxpayer money, send it to the vendor to do the work, then part of that money comes back to the campaigns of those people, elected officials. I find a tremendous amount of problems with that. I would like to have that done. I'd like to have a code of ethics written for council members. In the past, we've had council members who actually bought property next to projects they voted against and then voted for. We need to make sure that these, that the folks that serve on this body do not use their insider information in order to buy property that they have in fact have some information on, vote no on it, buy a piece of property next to it, and then vote yes. I have tremendous concerns about that. We need to also have more clarifications on how to handle death in office. There, where there was some tremendous concerns and questions on that, so we need to do that. We also need to have an ethics commission that has investigative power. There are people in this last campaign who did mailings that were anonymous, that violated MEC reports. We have no power to investigate or to look after those reports and to find out where they're at and who came, they came from. My proposal is, I would like to see that investigative, that ethics commission have the investigative authority to hire an outside private investigator or an outside police department, obviously not our own, because that'd be a conflict of interest, conflict of interest in itself, so that they can investigate those, that if, so that if somebody does in fact feel brazen enough to go ahead and do an anonymous mailing, they in fact could be caught and prosecuted for their behavior. To do that, I heard so many people have comments about those kinds of mailings being done, and they didn't know who did it. In this democracy, we have free speech, but we do not have the right to anonymous free speech, and it needs to be done, it needs to be dealt with. We also need to include sexual harassment allegations and, and all of those kinds of things that we could have, that we talked about last Tuesday, that there were some concerns from this body that said, hmm, I don't know if we should be, if we should in fact be under the guise of that kind of guidance. We're not above the law. We have to in fact be equal to our colleagues that are city employees. We need to follow the handbook of city employees that are appropriate to us. We are not above the law, we need to do that. We also need to have a succession plan in case there is a death in office. How would we go about that and what would we do? So I would like to, and I know, Mr. City Manager, that's a whole list, and you're probably trying to, but I've got it written down, so we'll do that. That's just a smidgen that I'd like to see the ethics commission work on to get it going. I would like to give them the open-ended process to look at best practices from other cities. I would like to find what other cities are doing on this, but I truly want this to happen. I want us to have the best ethics laws that we, of any city in the state of Missouri, both of, a code of ethics for elected officials, and also making sure that when campaign financing is not out of bounds, there should not be massive amounts of money coming to elected officials to run for office. And I think that's a, an incredibly important key, and so with that, I'll be happy to, to hear anybody's concerns that I have in that regard.
Oh, I got a whole bunch.
Well, you and me both.
No, that was a lot to take in. I'll try. So I'll give you all but two of them. I, I, most of the stuff you mentioned, okay, that's fine. The two, the ones that I have real problems with are the term limits, and I'll explain why, and campaign contributions.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start with campaign contributions. It happened in this last election. Somebody, well, came in from another office, they brought a lot of money with them to run for an office, and you had other people that didn't hardly have any money, you know, so if they were limited by those campaign contributions, how, how does that make it fair? It doesn't. So I agree that, you know, you know, vendors or, you know, whatever shouldn't be donating, but, you know, the state already has laws on campaign contributions, so I wholly agree, I don't think the city needs to be, you know. If somebody wants to, if somebody want, there were, there were people in the last election that took $5,000 checks. If somebody wants to write you a $5,000 check, then so be it.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I'm sorry, I'll let you proceed.
Okay, we should not be limited, and I'm not referring to you.
I understand, because I didn't take any of those, but.
Okay, no, I'm not referring to you. I'm not referring to you. As far as the, the term limits, you know, you know, one time I probably would've said sure, but I think the last couple of election cycles proved that they're not needed. I think the citizens of this community proved that when they'll term and limit you out, you know.
you know? The last two elections had happened. Heck, and they happened to me in two years, I don't know, you know? I guess we'll see. So I, I just don't think they're needed. And beyond that, aren't we gonna refer this to the charter committee possibly, anyway? Why are we duplicating the work of these two different committees?
Well, one of the things that I wanted to do with this, this is a great question, one of the things I wanted to do with this was actually, for those items that we would like to put on the charter, that we would have a committee who comes up with extensive ethics review. I think it's a lot of work to try to look at ethics review and look at the charter at the same time. So I would kind of blend in those ethics review items into the charter to make that happen. Those items that we as a body feel are relevant to do that. So, and I will tell you, there's lots of people who share your concerns with regards to term limits. I completely agree with that. However, in 2016, term limits were on the ballot 70 times all of the United States. How many times did it lose? Zero. Voters want term limits. Number two, I have tremendous concerns about elected officials running for municipal offices without any limits at all. Zero. Right now, we could get a check for a million dollars to run for this office if someone were so inclined to give it to us. That's wrong. I think a thousand dollar limit is perfectly fine, if this body would like to discuss that, I'm good with that, but I am not good with 10, or 15, or $20,000 limits. I'm maybe really good with five. We're talking about amiss elections. If you want to make an impact in this city, you can walk the doors in your district. You can walk the entire city. And I think that's the most influential way to talk to people. But when I mentioned term limits, it was an incredibly popular idea. So anyway, that was just the feedback, and I hope I didn't sound argumentative, sir, because I wasn't, I just had a difference opinion on that issue.
Just to throw, my big, this is my big problem with term limits.
Sure.
Do you know, does anybody know what the definition of a bureaucrat is? Just out of curiosity. No, seriously, what's the definition?
Fire away.
Okay. It's a, it's a non-elected, non-military government employee. So by that definition, Mr. Walker, I'm gonna pick on you, would you be a bureaucrat?
I hate that term, but I guess I fit it.
So, how many, how many members of this city coun, how long have you been with the city?
Ten years.
Is there any member on this body that was here when you came to this city?
No.
Okay. So I guess my point is, when you put term limits on, it's no longer the elected officials that's running the city, it's the bureaucrats. And I know it's, it's a dirty term, I know it sounds that way, but it's, it's true.
Sure.
You know, some non-elected people are running the city, not the elected members. And that, nothing's gonna change my opinion on that. I know it sounds good, our term limits sound good, we have members of Congress under federal lever that have been there for 40 or 50 years, I know it sounds good. But in Independence, we don't have that problem. I mean, how many members, I mean, I guess we have a member on here that, he did two terms, he left for several years, and now he's on his second term. But I mean, realistically, how many people in this city do more than three terms? Not many. I just don't think it's needed here.
Okay.
That's all I have thinking.
Would you be opposed, I know we've talked a lot about getting the vote, the will of the people, would you be opposed to having that as part of the, the charter commission process and let voters to vote on that?
You know, I guess I don't have a problem with the charter commission, but I just don't think it needs to be a part of this ethics thing.
Okay. And if, if that's, you know, if that would lighten the discussion, well, I'll tell you what, yeah, I, as we discuss it, we'll go ahead and put it in front of all of us, and we'll vote on it. But that's, that's one item that I'm probably not gonna bend on, but I, but I, as you well know, you and I have had a number of conversations, and I've always tried to be willing and, and to listen and to, and to get a sense of where are people at.
Well, if we can vote on them individually, that would be great, because I'm not voting for it as a whole, I can tell you that.
Sure. And we could put those items separately and, and talk about those. I'm not opposed to that at all. So very good. We could probably do it on a, on a Survey Monkey and get it done pretty quickly, couldn't we, City Manager?
I believe so.
We cannot, for the record.
Mr. Mayor, so-
Please.
So when we're talking about ethics.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean, I took ethics in university. Of course, it was under a, the religion blanket, but it, it was important to remember that ethics must enjoin the virtues of honesty, there's compassion, there's loyalty. In other words, the standard that we set has to be well-founded reasons. I mean, we, we, and I, and it's not that I, listen, I, I, there are, there are those who were elected in this city that I wish we had term limits on. But, but I, you know, but I trust-
You know I'm sitting right here.
I, well, I didn't, I was like, but, but I, I can tell you that I, at the end of the day, my loyalty and, and the people that I trust the most sit out there, they, they determine who they want representing them, and I've, and, you know, they, they'll take as much as they can, and there's been some people that have been elected and set up here for a couple of terms, and, and felt empowered and invincible, and they found out differently, just a couple of years ago. And so, I, I'm not a big term limit person, I think voters will determine the terms, and they, and they should, it's their city, as you said, it's their city, it's their, their charter. So we have to, we either have to believe that it is, or we, we say, well, we don't trust you enough to make those decisions every, every election. So we have to be cautious with that. The other thing is, I mean, I, I know the last campaign got really ugly, more so than, than any of us wanted to, to see. I don't know how we would, we would track down anonymous mailers. It'd be expensive. I had, two years ago, I had my Facebook page mirrored and hacked, and I know the IP address, and I know the house address that, of the people that did it. And I did nothing as a result, because I, I kind of believe in your three Ps approach. So, so I don't know, I just, I, we're just, I, those kind of things, it's kind of like throwing money down the rabbit hole, we just don't have a lot of money. And so I don't know how we go after that. I kind of disagree with your First Amendment statement. Dangerous speech is not protected, everything else is. And I don't have to be, I don't have to identify myself to be stupid, I can say stupid things. And I can say my name's Dave, and I can still say it. Unfortunately, it, it's protected speech. I don't like it at times, I think it's irresponsible, that's why I don't practice it. That's that ethics that we're talking about.
Sure.
So I understand, there was a lot of things said, a lot of hurts, I hope that we begin that healing process, we move forward, and we just, and, because we, again, we're tasked in this city, we have so many serious issues facing us. I don't want to look backwards, I think we've got to really look forward and press forward. So for where there's hurt, discomfort, I, you know, I, I, I hope that we can heal and move forward.
And I think, yeah, I'm sorry, Councilman.
No, it's okay, I, I just, I, I just really want to be cautious. I think our ethics needs to be, really, it needs to be enjoined with honesty, compassion, loyalty, and that needs to be the example here. And, and that's, that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just a question, so I'm a little confused about our discussion here, because I, I was looking at the document that was presented on the agenda tonight, and, and it talks, just basically provided information about the current ethics commission, and their really inability to, to respond on this. So are you, are you suggesting that we create a resolution to, to do what? To address those items, or to form a, an ethics review committee to address those for us? Because if we're gonna, if we're gonna form a re, ethics review committee, then I want that ethics review committee to have the freedom to look at those issues, as well as other issues, and make recommendations to us. If, if we're talking about a resolution to, to define that, that ethics, you know, that list of ethics, and pass, pass a code of ethics for us, then that's a different question. So I'm just a little confused as to what we're really trying to, which of those are, maybe, maybe neither one.
No, actually, it's a combination of both. What I'm here to do tonight is to get people's feedback on what items should be included in that resolution that we talk about. I, I had a number of suggestions, I have more that I would like to see that, I would not, as you mentioned, very precisely and correctly, not limit that committee just to the items we talk about tonight, that they have the authority to look at things, best practices from all of our cities. But I, I am not only concerned about this election, I've been in Independence for 40 I have seen some things done in this city that are not democratic in how they're carried out. So I'm not worried about the last election. I have no hurt, I have no pain. What I do want to do is talk about how elections have been run in this city for decades, and I have tremendous problems with those. And so I will be happy to put these items up to vote for all the members, you know, if they, if members prefer no term limits for the mayor. And notice, I even gave you license that I didn't ask for term limits for council members, you don't even vote against yourself, you have to vote against the mayor. And then also with the, the contribution limits, I feel very strongly about that, and if courts rule against us, I'm happy to abide by what the court says. But I think it's, and when I talk to voters, they were very concerned about a conflict of interest of vendors giving contributions to elected officials that were on the pursuing ballot. They were very concerned about term limits, they were very concerned about anonymous mailings, they were very concerned about a whole host of things. And I'd be remiss in my responsibilities not to carry that out when I heard from very, many, many people in regards to that. So anyway, with that being said, anybody have any opposition to the City Manager putting that item together, and then we can have a resolution, and then, I'm just talking about an ad hoc committee to work for six months with the ethics commission, and maybe three other members to be on there, and we could pick those three other members, you know? I would like to be able to-
I, I guess I would agree that, you know, we, we form a committee, it's a small committee, it's short-term, and they are tasked with, you know, providing us what they would recognize as a-
Best practices.
You know, a good code of ethics for elected officials in, in Independence.
Okay.
And I, I don't want to limit them, I don't want to confine them, I want to, they, they can do, you know, they can have a long list, they can have a short list, I, I just want to see what their outcome is, and what their product is.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? So with that, Minister City Manager, this is what I'm going to review, and you see if you're on the page with me, you'll take those ideas that we talked about there, we can certainly go back to the tape and see what I talked about, what other council members talked about, have Becky send it out to all of us, make sure that we're comfortable with it, they can send back feedback just to you, so we don't violate sunshine laws, and then we can in fact take that data, put together as a resolution, and then we can talk about that resolution and see what we would do as far as the committee is concerned. So I would like to have one up and running though, maybe late July, first of August, to make sure that work is done by December 31st of this year. But I think it's incredibly important that we have that process, and I think voters have the right to know when somebody sends out anonymous mailing. I think that's incredibly important, I heard about that many, many, many times at the doors. So with that being said, any other thoughts or comments before we move on and close the meeting? Seeing none, we'll close the meeting, thank you very much.